Hello students, welcome to Standard Eight English Study Session. In today's session, we'll see Lesson Number 1.2, Dick Whittington and His Cat. This Dick Whittington and His Cat is a nice, interesting story which you all will like very much, I am sure. In this story, there is a boy approximately of your age and how he faced challenges in his life. He went to England for some rumors he had heard, actually rumors we cannot say, some innocent beliefs. He had heard something, he went to England and what happened with him there in England? All these things are described very nicely, interestingly in this lesson. So that is Dick Whittington and His Cat. Now, as we have seen in the poetry section, we had divided the section in three categories. And they were first words reading, second words explanation, and third words analysis of the poem. Same way, in prose section, we'll see three parts in which first is introduction. In that, we'll see the introduction of writer, introduction of characters, and introduction of values which are presented through this lesson. Next is reading of the lesson, we'll read together all with books in your hands. In the reading, at the same time while reading, we'll take the explanation of this lesson and you will understand the lesson properly. In third section, that is summary, we'll revise the lesson once again in short, in brief, for your understanding, to make your understanding better. Review in short. So this way for every prose section, means every lesson, we'll divide the lesson in three parts, introduction, reading, and summary. So, without wasting much time, let's begin. Today's hour session, Standard Eight, English, Dick Whittington and His Cat. Okay, so this lesson is a folk story, folklore. You might have heard the word in history, folklore, means local katha, which was heard by generations, through generations it had come down. There are no proofs anywhere that this story is real or imaginary or written by somebody. So this story is a folklore, folk story, and in this story, the writer, whoever was, had presented the values in life such as patience, then tolerance, the most important, and many other which we'll see in the values section. So, this is a basic folk story, Dick Whittington and His Cat. Now, this story surrounds, this is English story, happened in England. So it's surrounding the real life story of Richard Whittington, who was a wealthy merchant in England and who became the Lord Mayor of England for three to four times. So the story relates with his life, but he was not that much poor as Dick Whittington is shown in his childhood. So, there are some similarities between the life of this Richard Whittington and Dick Whittington. But it's not, we cannot say that this is the story of Richard Whittington, there are no proofs about that. Then, characters of this story, lesson. One by one, we'll take the introduction of the characters. The first main character in this story is Dick Whittington, who was a poor boy. A very young boy, approximately as I said, of your age. He was very poor, his father and mother had expired. So he was an orphan child, orphan means the one who does not have mother and father for caring, for loving. He was all alone in the world and he was suffering from the conditions around him. Now in our society, it is generally, this happens generally in our society, that a person is judged by the wealth he or she has. So if you have wealth, you are treated respectfully. If you don't have wealth, the people almost, they do not respect you, that is apart, but they can insult you also on many occasions. And the same thing was happening with Dick Whittington. He was poor, he was orphan, he was all alone in the world, but just by considering his age, is it okay to torture this boy? The society, the people around him, almost many times tortured this boy. He was suffering from the unkindness of the society, of the people around him. So Dick Whittington is the main character in this story. One day, he heard something from someone that now he was staying in the southern part of England. And he heard one day that the paths, the streets of England, the roads in England are paved, covered with gold, pieces of gold. He heard that, that the streets, roads are covered with gold, is it true? Is it possible? No, but as he was very young, he believed it. He thought that, I'll go to England and I'll make my fortune. I'll try my luck, I'll bring some pieces of gold from there, from that street, and I'll become rich so that the people around me will treat me at least respectfully. They will value me, because I don't have wealth, they're not valuing me. If I will be having wealth, they may be, may give me some respect and value. So that was his intention and with the same intention, he went to England and what happened with him while reading, we'll come to know. Second character is Mister Fitzwarren, who was a very kind person, who not only offered him, Dick, a job, a work, but also offered him a place to live, food to eat, and was very kind with him. Even while his ship was going abroad somewhere, was on travel, that time also, he offered Dick, that, he gave him an offer, that if you are interested, you can invest something on my ship, and whatever profit or loss will come to my way, I'll give your contribution to you from that. So Mister Fitzwarren was another character. Then the next character is the carter, the wagoner. Carter means what, the person who drives the cart, cart of horses, who brought him to England. Then another character is the captain of the sheep, who was very loyal and honest, who gave Dick whatever his contribution was. Then the king and the queen, and a negative side is presented by the character of cook. The cook in Mister Fitzwarren's house, she was a very cruel type person, unkind person, treated Dick Whittington very badly, tortured him, and at a point, Dick felt that I should leave all these things and go away to some different part. So this negative shade is presented by this cook, who was a lady. And the main character, one more, the importance is given to the cat. The cat of Dick Whittington, what this cat did in the story, we'll see while reading. So these were the characters in the story. Now next, the values which are presented through this story. The values are, first value is patience. One must have patience, you must wait till your time comes, always in life. Then second is tolerance, you must have the capacity to tolerate. Sahan karne. Whatever conditions are there around you, you must have patience and you must tolerate everything for the betterment of your life. So this one more quality is presented, then kindness is presented. Kindness, the person who offered him job, who gave him everything, and finally, when his ship returned back, he gave Dick's share of profit to him very honestly and kindly. This character, Mister Fitzwarren, shows kindness. Then honesty, honesty of thought and speech is a jewel, as we say. So honest, the captain of the ship was very honest. Then gratefulness, thankfulness, gratitude, which you can see. This value is presented through the character of Dick Whittington. When he became rich, he did not forget those who had helped him once upon a time. So these values are presented and more than that, we'll come to know one by one the values which are presented in the story. So this was the introduction part of the story, Dick Whittington and His Cat. Now, turning to the next section, that is reading and explanation and understanding. Okay, let's all take the book in our hands. Have you taken? Good. Open page number six, Lesson Number 1.2, Dick Whittington and His Cat. Shall I begin? Okay. There was once a poor boy called Dick Whittington, who lived in a small village in the south of England. So where did Dick live? In the south of England, in a small village. He was a very poor boy. He had no proper home for, both his parents had died and he was unkindly treated by many of the villagers. Now see, he did not have home to live, homeless person. Then he was an orphan, there were no parents to take care of him, and he was treated very badly by the villagers, many of the villagers, not all. One day, Dick overheard, means heard from somebody, just like a rumor. Someone say that the streets of London were paved with gold and he decided that he would go there at once and pick his fortune up in gold pieces from the streets, for he thought people might treat him more kindly if he were rich. So he was living in the southern part of London and, sorry, England, and London is the capital city of England. So in the capital city, he heard from somebody that the streets of London are covered by gold. The actual meaning of this is somewhat different. The one who goes there to London and tries his luck, works hard, may get fortune in return was the meaning. But as he was very young, he believed it, he believed innocently, immediately. Oh, he thought, the streets are covered with gold? So why shouldn't I go and bring some pieces from there, I'll sell them out and I'll be rich? That was his intention. And he again thought, one more thing came into his mind, that if I'll be rich, the people will treat me kindly. That was the only intention of this very poor boy. So, young Dick set out to walk to London. Set out means just walked, started to walk. He had not gone far when a man in a cart stopped and asked him, if he was running away from home. Now while he was walking on the street, during those days, there were no vehicles, transport system like today. So he was walking on the road and he was very young, a small child. One cartman, a wagoner, came from the street with his horse wagon, and he saw a boy was walking towards London. And he thought that this boy might have run from home, without the permission of parents. So he asked him whether he was running away from home. "I have no home," Dick answered. Very poor of him. "I'm on my way to London to find my fortune." A phrase has come, to find one's fortune means to try one's luck. Underline that, to find my fortune, to find one's fortune means to try one's luck. "I'm going to London myself," said the carter, "jump up here beside me and we'll journey together." So he was also a kind person, did not say that go away from here. He told him, Dick, that I'm also going to London, come here, jump up, sit with me, and we'll go together to London. They arrived in London just before nightfall, during evening time, they came to London. And the carter left Dick and made his way to an inn, inn means a small hotel. So the carter did his duty well, he brought Dick to London and left him there. Told him that wherever you want to go, you can go, I'm going on my way. So he went to one small hotel, that is inn. Then, poor Dick stood alone and looked around him in dismay. Dismay means disappointment. Now this boy who had come here with great hopes, that all the streets are covered with gold, how they would be looking, gold and all. So these dreams were there in his mind and when he reached London and whatever he saw over there, he was disappointed. "Where was all that fine gold?" he thought. All he could see were dirty streets and lots of unfriendly people. So this is reality. No street is covered by gold, if it was, no person would keep it there, that is fact. So, when he saw there were many unfriendly people, who did not even look at this poor child, and the streets were almost dirty. So by seeing this condition of the streets in London, he was totally disappointed. He had nowhere to sleep and in the end, he spent the night in the corner of an alley where he hoped he would come to no harm. Alley means a narrow way, which we call in Marathi, a boor or gali, small narrow lane. So he came to an alley and he slept over there. Had no food, no place to live, nothing to eat, and the condition had become worst. The next morning, Dick woke up cold, miserable, and very hungry. He did not eat anything last night and he was now very hungry. He wandered around begging for food. So his condition had become, he was already poor, orphan, homeless child, treated unkindly by the people around, and now his condition was just like a beggar. Beggar means so, bhikari, okay? So he wandered, begging for food, he was hungry, but again and again, people shouted at him. No one provided him food to eat. "Go away you lazy fellow, be off with you." To be off, again a phrase, means to go away, to disappear, to disappear. Somewhere, go away from here, the people all drove him away, nobody was kind in London also. And not only this, aimed angry blows at his head, gave him nice punches, blows, okay? At last, he collapsed in the street. Collapsed, fell down, very hungry, poor, little child, he collapsed on the street and lay there too weak to look further for food. As he had not eaten for two days, he was very weak, no strength in his body, and he could not move further for food, in search of food. By chance, Dick had fallen in front of a house belonging to a rich merchant called Mister Fitzwarren. The kind character in this story. By chance, luckily, Dick had fallen in front of the house which was of Mister Fitzwarren. The cook was trying to drive Dick away, now this cook was very cruel, we have seen, she was unkind person. So she also tried to drive Dick away, to send him away, when Mister Fitzwarren returned home from inspecting his ships. So he was a ship merchant, ship owner, merchant who traveled on seas. And daily, he had the routine to go on the ships, check their everything, inspect there and come back. So he was returning home, luckily, he saw Dick falling in front of his home. He stopped and said to Dick, "Why don't you work if you need food?" Now here, self-respect value has come. He could have given him food, who Mister Fitzwarren, but he's told Dick that you should work, then earn your own living. Do not take the food in free as a beggar. Beggars take the food in free, they do not work. But if you are not a beggar, if you have your own self-respect, you should work, earn money and get your own food. So that is also very important value taught to us. We should never, never ever leave, give away our self-respect at any cost. "Why don't you work if you need food?" "I would work," said Dick, "but I know nobody who will give me anything to do." Dick was ready to work, but nobody offered him work, no one was kind with him till now. Take him into the kitchen, Mister Fitzwarren ordered the cook. Feed him first and then find some work for him. So he told the cook that, take him inside, treat him kindly, give him some food, then give him some work. So Dick was given a home and a living, he got both. He got a home also, a place to live and food to eat, both, and some money also, he gave him for work. Now he had a small corner of the attic to sleep in and his job was to help the cook with all the pots and pans in the kitchen. Now Dick had to work here with the cook, who was not kind at all, unkind lady. So Dick had to help her in her work. Now you can imagine how she might be treating Dick. Attic means what? A small place, which we call in Marathi, port mada, mada. There, she gave him place to sleep. And, his job was to help the cook. Dick's life should have been much better than before now, because before, he did not have the place to live, did not have home, did not have food, did not have work. Now he had all these three things, so life was better or not? Let's see whether his life was better or got worse. But he still had two difficulties to face. Again, two more different difficulties he had to face, which were these two? The first was that, the attic he slept in was overrun by rats and mice. Overrun means what? Many rats were running here and there, scampering on that attic inside. Many rats and mice. Now if you see one mouse somewhere there, you are scared, you run away from there immediately. So what would have happened with Dick, where he was sleeping in the small place, the place was filled with rats and mice. Dangerous condition. So, at night, they scampered all over him. Scampered means run from here to there, generally, mice run this way. And kept him awake, how could he sleep with those many rats around him? So, he could not sleep properly. After a time, he solved his problem by saving the few pennies. Pennies is the currency of England, one penny, just like one paise in a, pound means rupee, penny means paise. So he was paid and buying himself a cat. Now he solved his problem of mice by taking one cat, buying one cat, purchasing one cat with the saving he had with him. So the cat would have eaten all the mice and this problem was almost solved. If in no, in no time at all, the cat chased away all the rats and mice and Dick was able to sleep peacefully. So this problem was solved permanently. Whenever, wherever there are cats, the mice do not even go near to that place, we know that. So the cat was there to support Dick Whittington, he could sleep now peacefully. Other difficulty, which was not so easy to overcome. And what was that? Was the cook's bad temper. The cook was an angry lady, she was, all the way she was angry with Dick. Because it was the reason simple, that when Dick was, had fallen down there, she wanted to drive him away. But Mister Fitzwarren told in front of Dick, that take him away, do not behave with him unkindly. So she had been insulted and so she was now taking revenge on Dick, almost. So she had a bad temper, she shouted and screamed all day and would scold Dick and hit him even sometimes with a wooden spoon. This way, she hit him. Even when he was working as hard as he could, a small child, she never thought that he was of very young age and I should treat him kindly, never. So she expected that he should work just like a grown-up person. Dick worked maximum possible, but still, she always had anger on Dick. One night, Dick decided he could stand it no more, to stand it, to stand something. Phrase means what? To tolerate, to bear something. He could not bear at all so much torture of the lady. Early the next morning, before the cook was up, he set out with his cat to seek his fortune elsewhere. So he decided one night that tomorrow I will run away from here. I cannot bear any, anymore now, patience is over. And early morning, the next morning, he woke up very early, the cook was sleeping yet, he came out of the home and with his cat, he went out. He set out with his cat to seek his fortune elsewhere. The two of them, Dick and his cat, walked as far as Holloway on their way out of London. Then Dick sat down on a stone to rest. Dick sat there on a stone, that stone and the statue of the cat is still there in England. You won't believe that, a folk story is so popular that they have made the statue of this cat on that stone particular place. So they sat down there. It was the first of November, All Saints' Day, and the church bells were ringing. So in European countries, first of November is celebrated as All Saints' Day. Saint means who sages. So on this particular day, they believe that whatever you beg to God, whatever you pray, your all wishes come true. Fortunately, luckily, it was the first of November and the church bells were ringing. Prayers were going on in all the churches. Prayers were going on in all the churches around. As Dick sat and listened, it seemed they were ringing out a message for him. He sat there lonely, calm, quietly, without speaking a word, without crying. So silent he was, the atmosphere was silent and the bells were ringing. And he heard one message through those bells and what was the message? "Turn again Whittington, thou worthy citizen, Lord Mayor of London." Now what was this message? Message was saying as if, turn again Whittington, do not go away, come back. Come back to your own place, wherever you had come from, thou worthy citizen. Thou means you, you are a worthy citizen of London and come back to your place. Lord Mayor of London, you will be the Lord Mayor of London in future. Mayor means who? Mahapaur, the head of the city. So you will be the mayor of this city in future, so don't go away from here, just come back. That message was heard by Dick. "Lord Mayor of London," said Dick, "I should like to be Lord Mayor and ride in a fine coach." He had seen mayor going from here to there in a nice fine coach. "I can put up with a few scoldings from the cook, if that is what is in store for me." To put up means to tolerate. Now if the lord wishes that I should go back, so that I'll be the mayor of London someday in future, I can bear that lady for some time. If it is in my faith, if it is in my fortune, if it is in my luck, I'll bear that lady, he thought. So Dick and his cat retraced their steps to Mister Fitzwarren's house. Retrace means turn back. Luckily, they were able to slip back before they had been missed. So nobody had woken up till now, all were sleeping, nobody noticed even that both of them had ran away somewhere in the morning. So it was thankfully good thing for him, no torture for that purpose. Now Mister Fitzwarren used to send ships far across the sea to trade with other countries. He was a ship merchant and his ships used to travel across the sea to other countries and to sell something, to buy something. He was a merchant. He would load a ship with goods for the captain and ship's crew to sail in faraway places and then they would bring back goods that could be sold at home. So he would load, fill the ship with some things. The people who want to go with that ship, they could go, they could sail in other countries, make profit from that and come back to your own place. So this is part one of the story, Dick Whittington and His Cat. Here we have to stop today. Now, this section is over, I think that everybody has understood this part well. Now going to the summary, review in short. Now let us see once again, Dick Whittington, a very poor boy, orphan boy, was treated very unkindly by the people around him. And one day he heard that the streets of London are covered with gold. So trying, just in search of the gold, he came to London. But there was no gold over there, the people were also unfriendly, unkindly, treated him badly and he collapsed in front of a house. Thankfully, this house was of Mister Fitzwarren, who was a merchant, ship merchant. And he offered him work, place to live, food to eat and everything, treated him very kindly. But the lady, the cook in his house was not so much good, she tortured him. And one day, Dick decided that I will leave this home. He went from there, sat on a stone over there on a lonely place. Fortunately, it was first of November, All Saints' Day. And he heard through the bells of church, that somebody was telling him, "Go back, Dick, you will become the mayor of London in future." So he trusted that message. He thought that I'll go back and I will tolerate whatever are the things with me, happen with me, yes, I will do it. And he went back and the ship merchant, that is Mister Fitzwarren, had to travel across the sea somewhere, he wanted to send his ship. And what happens next in the story, we'll see in part two of this story. So you all will read this lesson once again with proper interest. Thank you.